Delay will start in within the next minute or two. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge in a moment of silence. We have a roll call of attendance, please, Terry.
Mr. Klausert. Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Dr. Gatachu.
Here.
Dr. Green.
Here.
Mrs. Heater.
Here.
Mr. Hiron. Mr. Reichardt.
Here.
Mr. Vagnets.
Here.
Mr. Brookhart.
Here. I'd like to announce that we just had an executive session to discuss personnel issues, contract negotiations, and a student issue. Anything else? Okay. Item 1.3, Board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the January 9th, 2023 board meeting as presented. We have motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Klausert.
Here.
Yes. Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gatachu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Item 1.4, January 30th, 2023, special board meeting. The board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the January 30th, 2023 special board meeting as presented. We have a motion.
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 Second? Got it. Comments, questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gatachu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert. Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Board Administrative Announcements, item 2.1, reports. We're going to start with our Finance and Budget Committee and Mr. Vagnets. Mr. Vagnets, it's yours.
Uh, we met on the 7th and went over the preliminary expenditures budget. Uh, we went, we talked with each individual department and their respective leaders. High school, middle school, Liberty Valley, primary, special ed, psych, network and tech, and curriculum and maintenance all showing slims in their budget for the upcoming preliminary. Uh, you got athletics, you know, board, business, office, nursing. Were small increases, nothing too big. Total amount that we came up was at the Finance Committee meeting was about $293,036 slimmed. And then plus with retirements and resignations, we also looking at 536,316. So that's a total of 829,352 slim from the budget. These numbers do not affect learning or the students. And also I'd like to thank Jason and Molly on presenting the preliminary budget when asked. And next month's Finance Committee will be, um, going over the projected revenues. And it will be on February 28th.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Vagnets at this point? Academic Affairs Committee, Ms. Heater.
Sure, so we met on February 8th and we talked about the high school schedule and it is going to remain the same as this year's because it's working well. Um, also Mr. Nguyen talked about and shared the high school course selection guides, which are beautiful. Um, there are two separate ones right now for the class of 2026 and beyond and then one for 2024 and 25. And as Molly did explain, we had, it'll eventually turn into one instead of two just because of the different requirements. Another thing that Mr. Nguyen shared with us was the color-coded icons that correlate with the careers, which I think is an excellent scaffold for the students to be able to see what field that course relates to. They also stated if there was no course code, it's not running. And there was in the area of social studies, new offerings in world cultures. The proposed calendar was discussed, the first read is tonight. We are back to, and Molly feel free to jump in if I miss something. Uh, we are going to be back to the August timeline like the other districts to start because it'll save the district money on transportation. This year we did after Labor Day and it costs more. They're going to have five traditional snow days built into this, but we are also applying for the flexible instruction days in case needed. Um, they talked about, there's also two ACT 80 days for professional development. And then they put in here that the professional development for 23, 24 is science of reading, curriculum writing, and new reading series. Priority areas, elementary literacy, talked about the big five for the primary school, the phonics fluency vocabulary, phonemic awareness and comprehension. Um, we discussed the into reading and Molly and I had met about that and I, um, I fully supported it as long as she agreed to pull out the non-science of reading materials that are included in that program. Um, and she assured me that they would be pulled and they would do the mapping and they're going to continue to use Hegarty, which is great and OG for phonics. Um, they talked about developing a diagnostic assessment schedule and pointing out with our valid assessments, ones that are research-based and not ones from teachers pay teachers. Um, and also the PD days that will be set for analyzing and acting on the data because teachers need to be data-driven and they need to, you know, meet the needs of their learners and the only way that's going to happen, of course, is if you follow and act on the data. Um, and then they also talked about, I can briefly say, if Molly, if you want to add more about the coding system being built into Sapphire, which I think is absolutely amazing for tracking the students as they transition from, um, you know, we have our primary school to Liberty Valley and so on, going up to the middle school and high school. So a teacher is able to look at a student and get the data on that child to see any services they had, which I think is amazing. Um, it just benefits for the students. And then also with transition plans to, they talked about, of course, you know, uh, the building, the transition plans that the principals are going to be working on. Um, I guess Mrs. Willoughby will be working on one with Mr. Gump to transition from primary to intermediate and then intermediate to middle school and so on, so on. And what I really loved about it was that they're adding more with parent and family engagement for the students, which is exceptional and so warranted. Also she shared that the principals now have newsletters that go out monthly, which is fabulous. And then we did have a discussion about summer school. Um, it will look different this summer because of the fact the ESAR funds that did fund it before, such as at the primary school, they are not available. So at the primary school in March, there will be, if there's an interest, some self-paid specialized camps available and there will be an MS program to help struggling learners. And there will also be credit recovery at the high school to help students stay on track, of course, to graduate. Final thing, we had some wonderful science teachers there from the middle school. They asked if the school district would consider bringing, bringing back consumer science. It was discontinued after the flood. Um, and so we talked about that. They had a food for thought club after school. They had over 40 kids. Um, but we did discuss the fact that this is long-term because there's a lot of upfront costs as well as a reoccurring cost that Mr. Nguyen projected about $8,000 to $10,000. So I do want to take time to thank Molly and Jason for all the work you're doing to get the science of reading and high-quality materials into our teachers' hands because, and also to get the teachers trained and the leaders because that is what's going to make a difference. So thank you.
Buildings. Buildings and Grounds Committee, Daryl Reichardt.
There has not been no meeting set up yet since the new person took over.
I was going to ask you if we could set something up with our new person. Is he on yet?
He starts on Wednesday.
Okay. Sometime after that we at least get him to know the committee a little bit and understand what's happening within the district. Thank you. Athletics and Extracurricular Activities Committee, Sherri Cooper.
Uh, we had a meeting on, uh, February 2nd. We had some discussions on winter track. Uh, the coaching renewal and coach hiring practices. We are going to honor extracurricular advisors or coaches existing contracts. Moving forward, all coaches and advisors are going to be presented to the board for approval on an annual basis. On the 9th, we had interviews for girls varsity tennis position and boys lacrosse positions. We are still accepting applications for a head football coach. And the swimboard is in finally. Brian Albertson is working with various companies to understand the options for digital advertising in the gym. They already have the capability. And in the stadium, it would require a new scoreboard.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions for Ms. Cooper? All right. Health and Wellness Committee, Dr. Green.
Uh, so the Health and Wellness Committee itself hasn't met, but the mental health work groups continue to meet. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to attend as many of those as I would like. Um, but there should be some sort of recommendation and substantial product. Next month is our projected target. And I just want to thank Dr. Need and Dr. Kettlewell and the administrative staff that have participated heavily in doing this and making it possible and having a good discussion surrounding it. So I feel more positive about a lot of the mental health and mental health. This is the most significant thing I've seen since I've been in Danville in 12 years. I just want to say I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And you also have the Health Insurance Committee.
There's nothing public to talk about in that context currently.
Yeah, we're in negotiations process. Okay, thank you, Dr. Green. Columbia Montour, Votech School, Mr. Klausert.
Yeah, the, a lot of the bids have gone out for the project up there. To this point, uh, they've actually come in a million dollars less than what, uh, was projected for the, the current trades that have already been, that, that have already been, uh, submitted and the remainder of the bids, I believe, are going out, uh, between the last meeting and this meeting next week. So I'll have more information on that the next.
Okay. Good to hear. They come in under, under projections.
Yes, at, to this point.
Right.
There's still more bids to come in.
There's still more to come. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, CSIU, Dr. Gatachu.
So the more, uh, pertinent thing that I see from the CSIU that they're building a student art repository at their facility in Montandon. And they're trying to collect artwork and they have offered us or all the district in their, uh, in their, uh, under their wing to submit any high school student that would like to submit their artwork, whether it's painting or, uh, sculpture. So whoever wins will have their art to collect it there. I think they pay $300 for the winner.
Right.
And, uh, we encourage our high school students, if they want to participate, go for it, so. Uh, next meeting is, uh, this Wednesday.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments about the IU at this point? Thank you, Dr. Gatachu. EITC, Mr. Hiron is not here tonight. Head Start, Mr. Reichardt.
Uh, Head Start was planned for the day that we had school closed. It's not, didn't work out well. Linda, you have anything or? Linda, you have anything? Okay. She'll fill us in on much more.
Great. Thank you. CS Trust, we didn't have a meeting. Those meetings are quarterly, every three months. I imagine we have one coming up soon. I haven't heard anything. The trust is actually based in the IU and that is the basis of some of our medical costs and, and options for our staff. Board of Director Goals. Board will take action to adopt the 2023 Board of Directors Goals as presented. Dr. Need, do you have a hard copy of them? Just so we could read them. That's fine, yeah, because I don't have a computer in front of me.
So, would you like me to read them out loud?
That'd be great if you would, Dr. Green.
2023 DASD Board of Director Goals. Academic Affairs. Make Danville the premier district in the region and one of the top 10 districts in the state within three years by making incremental increases in all areas that are part of the National Blue Ribbon Award Process and the PA ACT 13 Assessment Process. Mental Health Task Force. Prioritize the recommendations of the Mental Health Task Force by providing mental health support.
Dr. Green, I'm going to interrupt for a second. They can't hear you. Can you pull your microphone closer?
I'm not loud enough. First time I've ever been told that.
Apparently, apparently, the people at home cannot hear you.
And before you start on that one, the, the second one that Dr. Green's going to move on is not on this list. And I don't know if everyone's seen it, but I was going to ask you to put one in anyway. So, this is perfect that you actually have something.
It's on this one.
Okay. That's, that's one that wasn't initially, but.
Didn't get switched out.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Green.
For those of you following at home, for us to become one of, one of the top 10 districts in the state and meet the National Blue Ribbon Award Process and PA ACT 13 Assessment Process. Mental Health Task Force. Prioritize the recommendations of the Mental Health Task Force by providing mental health support for students at the tier-one, tier-two, tier-three levels, professional development for teachers and staff, and communication efforts and support for parents and the community. So, inclusive beyond just our immediate students. Finance. Analyze the financials of the district to ensure that we provide the best education possible for all students at a reasonable cost to the district taxpayers. Athletics. Ensure that our athletics program is reaching its goal to develop competitive student athletes, but not to lose sight of educational values such as sportsmanship, citizenship, health, and scholastic attainment. Buildings and Grounds. Maintain and upgrade the facilities with the intent of providing the best possible education at a reasonable cost to the district taxpayers.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Are there any comments, questions, concerns about the board goals for this year? These usually are done in conjunction, or should be done in conjunction with the budgeting process. And that's what we're trying to comply with right now. Okay. Time to vote.
Dr. Kotachu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Vognets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Number three, Superintendent's Report. And 3.1 Enrollment Report.
In my report, you'll see some enrollment numbers that we can look at. We'll share some good things that are happening in the district. And we will look at our proposed expenditures for 2023, 2024, as well as an explanation of federal funding in the form of ESERS. So, we shared this last time, but I just wanted to update it. You know, just some slight changes in numbers. We're interested in sort of the breakdown of the non-public enrollment in our district regions. So, you can see it there by category in terms of number of students at outside cyberchargers, Christian schools, special programs, Amish schools, nature schools, and homeschool. Christian schools do make up the largest number there. So, if you go to the next screen, you can see a specific breakdown of where our students are when it comes to Christian schools. The following enrollment screen will show you where we are in terms of Columbia Montour Area VOTEC School. Our numbers have stayed the same as I presented last month, but you will see kind of years going down the column on the left in our grades. So, we currently have a total of 109 students at VOTEC for the 2022, 2023 school year. And if you go to the next screen, you'll just see how the total enrollment at Columbia Montour Area VOTEC School has changed from 2017, 18 to 21, 22.
Can I interrupt you just a second?
Of course, yes.
Can you back up? Are you able to back up?
I think that you probably can.
Will you go back up one more?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see St. Cyril's. Am I missing that somewhere? They do have kindergarten, correct?
They do have kindergarten.
Is that under St. Joe's?
I think that that may be under St. Joe's, but I'm not sure.
That's not under St. Joe's, but we don't really, we don't, I don't think we have St. Cyril's in our system.
Okay.
We'll have to see if there's a way to find that out, because the students never enrolled at Danville at all. But we do need to figure out, St. Cyril's does have preschool, but it does go to a kindergarten.
They have a kindergarten as well, I believe.
There'd be a group of kindergarteners that would be ours.
And I, I know there are.
Or some of them could be ours.
And I know there are articles done, I think one in each of the local newspapers. And I think, I believe, I'm not positive of this, but St. Cyril's has actually doubled their enrollment as well. I think they went from like 18 to 37. I don't know where I read or heard that, but I'd just like some verification. Just to get a sense of where everybody stands. They have pre, I think they have pre-K and they have kindergarten.
Yeah, so, all, all my kids, I'll be honest, all my kids went through St. Cyril's.
Mine did too. That's why I asked.
And they have a, a short period class for the youngest group.
Yeah.
And then they have an actual pre-K class that goes till three.
Right.
And then they, they have the kindergarten, which goes till three.
Okay. And I've been at this for a couple of months and don't want to belabor the point, but all these things are a part of our planning process because those students that go to these schools to a certain level, those, they stop being able to go there because they're not through high school. And then what happens once they hit that level and what, how does that impact our staffing? And when are they learning? The kids may be leaving St. Joe's and coming here, because there are times we've had bubbles where all of a sudden, a lot of kids come here or a lot of kids leave here during the pandemic. And we should do as much as we can to try to be cognizant of those things as we plan. And if you want to go on to the next one, that'd be fine again. Do we ever get an answer on the, the last one? The 18 at ninth grade, Dr. Need, that we have was the previous slide, that there are only 18 students at Columbia Montour VOTEC in our ninth grade. And is there some rationale for why we've had such a significant drop from, you know, a high of 36 that we had in 2021? And now we're, we have half of that. We're entering into a massive building project and I think we're going to spend close to $5 million there. And we've, our enrollment's dropped. We cut half ninth grade in 2021 to now.
I, I think there's some compounding factors there. One would be, I think the public is probably aware from reading local papers that there's been a significant change in leadership that's happened. And some students have chosen to leave kind of during that period of time. We've also been working really closely with them because we've had some students request earlier this year to come back from VOTEC. And so, we have, and credit to Ms. Wenrick, who works with our special ed students. We've had a lot of individual meetings with students and families to kind of better understand why that's happening and why they're feeling, not that we don't want to have our students in district, of course, but if that's the choice they made, we want to try to help them be successful there. But we have, and it's my, it's only my first year doing this, so I don't know history. I'm just hearing about history. But we have an increased amount of people requesting to come back, is my understanding from previous years.
Okay. And I'll, my last statement, VOTEC's been a significant part of the history of this region. It's been there over 50 years and it's valuable and it's important. And it's been important to Danville and the graduates come out and, and they get employed. Very high placement rate, but clearly, they're somewhat in turmoil right now. There's some flux and as we move into such a significant project there to see the leadership changes that they're going through, I just, I'm not criticizing them. I'm just saying, we need to be very cognizant of what's happening there and bring information back here. So, we know what's happening and how it's going to impact us in our district. Thank you.
Terry was able to look up 15 students at St. Cyril's.
Thank you. Okay. That was, I don't know where I read that. Is that the full amount of kids?
Those are the Danville ones.
That's as many as we have registered.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. And some of theirs may not be from Danville as well.
Right.
It's very possible. Okay. Go ahead.
And if you go to the next slide, sorry, we did share newsletters. So, I don't know if you're able to pull those up for a moment. So, families received these newsletters last Monday and they will receive similar ones on a monthly basis. So, on the first Monday of the month. So, Mr. V, I'll put you on the spot first to just share any sort of highlights that are happening at the high school that you'd like to tell everyone about. And Mr. Ryan, maybe scroll through that a little bit. But certainly, Mr. Marholic, feel free to speak to things that aren't on there as well.
Yeah, so, a lot of the things here that happened were things that took place over the course of the holiday break or kind of leading up to February. So, if you take a look at some of the academic things that are going on, our, both our PMEA for chorus, or choir and band, they both are, let me just pull this up as well, just to follow up. Our choir sending from district, districts, they're sending four students. So, that'll be coming up next week. And then our regional festival for PMEA district band is sending four, or I'm sorry, six students to regionals, which is really quite an accomplishment for them. But also, obviously, that they're not done. So, we'll see them kind of go on. We also had a bunch of stuff happen with, ironically, FFA happened over the course of the break. But we also have them holding there at the end of February here, right after President's Day. So, they'll have like a spirit week coming up where they'll have different activities going on throughout the school to kind of promote their programs. But also, that kind of ramps them up for some of the competitions that they'll be having coming up here at the end of the school year. So, that's, like I said, and that's just a photo of them with their project that they made for the ag, the state ag show in Harrisburg, which they presented that is actually a log splitter. And that's actually being showcased in the front of the high school. So, if anybody wants to stop in, like at a basketball game, it's kind of right, right there in the front lobby. That's a, a photo of our thistle state competition, which is kind of a subset category from our forensics program. They actually had a, I highlighted this at the last board meeting, but that's a photo of them from their competition that they had in Bloonsburg. So, they do like a, from, again, I apologize if I get this wrong, but basically, it's like a subset of a play. So, I watched it for like an hour. So, it's a little bit shorter than a normal play. And I can tell you, it was absolutely phenomenal thing to watch our students be involved with. And they had many decorated things that happened. Two of the students were recognized there and it kind of talks about that specifically in the right up there. And then, to kind of highlight that, our musical will be coming up here at the very beginning of March. That's March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. It's $10 to get into that. It'll be at 7:00 each night. So, please come out and support our students. It'll be the Addams, Addams Family production. And so, we're really excited about them performing that. So, that'll be something that's coming up here at the beginning of March, so, before our next board meeting. So, I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that. And then also, all of our sports teams are kind of wrapping up their winter seasons. So, make sure you take a look at the calendar and some of the stuff that'll be coming out on Facebook and things like that in terms of when events are coming up for playoffs, because all of our teams are kind of ramping up to get ready for the postseason. So.
Thank you so much, Mr. V. And I'd like to shout out Mr. V and a bunch of our staff across the district who, to have a fun way to wrap up a winter sports season. They've been challenging the students to athletic competitions. So, today, there was teachers against students in a swim competition. So, who was the winner today? I had a feeling it was not going to be the teachers. And there's a, bocce ball is coming up, a teachers against students bocce ball. Girls' basketball was last week. So, the students that participate in those activities have been having fun playing against the teachers and lots of other students have enjoyed going to watch these events. I'll turn it over to Mr. Snover. This is our Danville Middle School news.
All right. So, speaking of VOTEC, we took our eighth grade to visit, visit VOTEC on January 19th. They actually were up there all morning and got to enjoy a lunch there. So, we're currently in the process of taking our VOTEC applications. Our guidance department is exacting them through February 17th. And hopefully, we'll see some of those numbers go up a little bit this year. Keep scrolling there, Jeff. We had a game night a couple of Fridays ago, January 20th. I can say that it was a very well-received activity. There were, were many, many students in the library and in our lobby area playing games, singing karaoke. A lot of fun was had. We, our National Junior Honor Society helped sponsor it, sold food and helped run the games and the karaoke. Our ski club has gone on a few trips. The weather hasn't cooperated super well for them. They were able to go two Fridays ago when it was very, very cold. And unfortunately, that night got cut short as Montage Mountain experienced a power outage that ended up sending everyone home a couple of hours earlier than they planned. And I think all the students got some vouchers in order to be able to go back at a discounted rate the next time. And finally, we had a long-term teacher here in Danville School District, Mr. John Petrus, retired just this past week after 23 years of service to our district. And we certainly wish him great retirement.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gump's not able to be with us this evening, but Mrs. Willoughby could tell us about the primary school.
Sure. Okay, well, to start, while Jeff gets the newsletter up, we are starting to focus on school-wide culture and improving some of the behaviors that we're seeing at school in a nice, fun way. So, what we're doing is we're reintroducing behavioral expectations through different assemblies and activities, all while we're continuing on with our PBIS, which is the Iron Kids. But we do have a committee who is meeting to really revamp and work on some of those areas in PBIS. On, oh wait, I'm sorry. Okay. So, if you want to go to the next page, Jeff. We also are, our students have some fun opportunities in Spanish. There you go. So, in our Spanish class, students receive their bilingual superpowers by reaching their goal of counting to a certain point in Spanish. So, that is a fun activity for students. And students look forward to receiving that goal or that achievement. Also, we had the high school students come from the honors vet class and they brought a baby goat to visit some students, which was very fun. They visited classrooms and they did a presentation to specific groups of students. The baby goat couldn't take a, a large group of students because it would become afraid. Academic highlights, as Dr. Need had spoke about, we are beginning to really look at student literacy and how we are teaching literacy, focusing on the science of reading, as Mrs. Heater specified. So, we are trying to reinforce these skills through different ways throughout the school day. And then just some upcoming events that we have on our calendar and we've already added to that since this has been posted. March will have some other activities.
Well, thank you so much to the administrators for putting those together for us on a monthly basis. And then, Mr. Ryan, if you go to the next screen, we have a few Head Start highlights, just the next, next slide in there. And I'll let, turn that over to Mrs. Marshall.
It's really nice to be able to invite people in again. So, on the top part, we had Central Susquehanna Opportunities lead a workshop for our families on budgeting and they all got a budgeting planner and tips for them. To the right is, we had the Women's Center come in to all of our classrooms and they do a puppet show on safe and appropriate touches, which is, the kids really enjoy the puppets. Program for them. On the bottom part is, a Geisinger pediatric resident visited all of our, our classrooms to talk about pet safety. And on the right, Dr. Brokenshire provided free dental exams to five of our students who are not able to get a dental exam. So, just a lot of fun community happening in the last month at Head Start.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We're going to take a transition now to looking at our. We're gonna take a transition now to looking at our finances. We're gonna start by talking about our federal ESER funding, and so ESER funding is that funding that came through the federal government in response to the pandemic. So I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Moser, and he's gonna talk through the next couple slides, and then we'll move into our expenditures.
So when we talk about actual the ESER funding, can we go back?
There you go.
There's really three buckets that we were talking about. There was the first ESER funding bill, the ESER 2, and then the ESER 3. The ESER 3 is what's referred to as the ARP, essentially what is necessary for right now for our purposes. ESER 1 and ESER 2, they are, they were spent, they were closed down, that's not just here, that's everywhere, they were, they were...
And they were relief money from the pandemic.
They were relief money from the pandemic, yes. But that funding, in terms of ESER 1 and ESER 2 closed out, you can see not even part of this year's current budget, but we also put the total amounts there because I think it's important, we thought it was important to see that it was about almost $2.5 million for ESER 1 and ESER 2 combined. So that was going back to really the 2020, 2021 school year, and you could actually backdate that a little bit into the 1920 even, as you were allowed to. But really, what we're concerned with finding out is ESER 3 funding, so if you can go to the next slide.
There you go.
There you go. So the Danville Area School District, total awarded grant of little over $3.7 million. So the district began receiving, and as did all districts in PA, in the 21, during the 21-22 school year. However, when you started receiving that money as a district, you could actually utilize it to pay for some programs that were in the 2020-2021 school year. So as we reviewed records, and really a lot of, a lot of financial records being reviewed, what we can say is that in 2020-2021, we spent almost $24,000 in summer school. Now, summer activities is one of the, what they referred to as set-asides, so there were really three areas of set-asides in the ARP ESER funding bill. It was summer school, or summer, summer learning loss, after-school learning loss, and then mental health, professional development and supports. So those three areas have a prescribed amount, which every district had to spend a certain percentage of their overall grant on. So you had latitude within, within those areas, but it had to match up within those areas. So what we can say is that in 21-22, you can see almost $1.7 million was expended from that original $3.7 million. So that was spent on things such as more summer school activities, after-school learning loss activities, curricular purchases and SEL purchases. You'll notice I skipped over, but now I'm gonna come back to the funding of nine salaries. So they were essentially, this is where it gets a little confusing. So the district received this money, coded nine salaries to it. The nine salaries that the district chose to code to ESER funding were positions which previously existed. They were not new. The ones that if you look at where that federal money is coded in our financial statements, none of those are new positions. However, during the time of the actual ESER funding bill, when we had ESER 3 funding, there were four and a half positions that were new to the district that did not exist prior to the district receiving that federal funding. So it's truly 4.5 full-time positions that were created, and we'll get into those details a little bit more. To move on to this current budget, hold on, back up please, Jeff, there we go. If you see the 22-23 school year, that is this current year, by the end of this year, we will have spent $1.6 million, again, on those activities. For the most part, that money is funding those nine salaries. So what, where does that leave us? That bottom line, essentially around $430,000 of ESER 3 funding remains for the 2023-2024 school year. So that money will be, will be booked as revenue next year. In the budget that we're currently working on for next year, we will be able to project that revenue onto next year's budget, $430,000. Clearly, the challenge is, that is not enough to pay for nine positions.
Can I add a question?
Yes, absolutely.
So the designated purpose of the ESER 3 funding was what?
ESER 3 funding was, truly, the focus was on learning loss and loss of revenue. So essentially, what, what was really recommended was that new, new positions were not created. Lot of districts supplanted positions all over the place. I mean, that is not something that is, that is unheard of. If you go district to district, they found a way to use that money to kind of fill in as a stopgap for the lost revenue in some ways. Now, the challenge there is that money comes off the books, as we all know. A lot of districts, however, used it for things like construction projects, upgrades to air quality systems, HVAC systems, along those lines. So there was only about, about 20% of the funding, approximately 20% of the overall bill had prescribed usages, so that you had to spend it in those things of learning loss, mental health, summer activities, and then in the rest of the money outside of the set-asides, 20% of that funding had to actually go towards learning loss. 80%, so if we broke that down, I don't know the math off the top of my head, but it probably would be somewhere around $2.5 million if I had to guess, please don't quote me on that, $2.5 million that was really discretionary spending that we could have used for things like projects, things like, things of that nature.
So as we were doing a project at Liberty Valley, which we borrowed money for, we had money that was designated for that purpose.
Correct.
It could have been, yes.
It could have been, yeah.
Could have been, okay.
We didn't, the district did not choose to designate that money for that purpose?
Right, okay. Thank you.
And Jeff, if you go to the next slide, that'll show that sort of position explanation that Mr. Moser was talking about.
Yeah, so the nine full-time salaries that have been supplanted last year, 21-22, and then this current year, 22-23, that are coded under ESER, of those nine, four and a half were newly created. What we are assured of right now is that 1.5 of those 4.5 positions had a known ending date at the end of this current school year. So now we're down to seven and a half positions that are still in need of being funded with $430,000 left there to fund.
Can I just be explicit, because I want the public to actually understand what, what's at stake here and what we're discussing? So there was a large amount of temporary funding that came into the system for essentially the course of three years, and that was funding that you couldn't reliably have beyond those three years and couldn't be depended on. That money was mainly intended to cover up the costs of COVID and to recover learning loss for all the children who are adversely affected by COVID. And what happened was, it appears that that money was spent in ways, some of which were to effectively create new positions that don't have a terminal date. So it would have made sense if you created a position that had a terminal date once the funding disappeared, but you've created positions that don't have a terminal date, and now what effectively we're trying to do is find money in order to cover the costs of those created positions, so we do not have to let people go. And just to be clear, the board has no intention, I don't want to speak to the board, but they've expressed in the past...
No, I agree, yeah.
...that they have no intention of letting people go, but we've been put in a difficult position where effectively, money was spent in a way that, temporary money was spent in a way that it was not intended to be spent to create additional positions that didn't exist prior to it, and with no plan to continue funding those positions after the temporary money disappeared. And I just also want to be very clear that both Jason and Molly did not make any of these decisions.
No, no. I want to just follow up on that. So, you know, going back to, you brought up the primary school, when the board was told that there was money within the budget, there really was not money within the budget, because if there were money in the budget, we could have funded some of these nine positions with that money. The money was this money that you're talking about, that they used for the positions, so it was no real extra money. And the second thing is, kind of Budgeting 101 says, if you have a temporary source of revenue, you don't use it for an expenditure that's going to continue after the revenue goes away, which is kind of the same thing you're saying.
So one of the most intelligent strategies with this money, besides covering up learning loss, would have been to make renovations to the buildings that are necessary renovations or repairs, and that was part of what the money was intended to be used for, which it was not used for. Instead, we made the choice to take out additional loans to fund construction projects that needed to be done.
And you and I were heavily criticized by outgoing administrators for pointing out this very fact.
100%.
The state gave a great deal of latitude in terms of construction projects, rehabilitation projects to existing buildings, and there are certainly local cases where that's exactly how it was used, or at least a good chunk of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the financial transparency, and I really appreciate you bringing this to light in this way, because this is now our problem to figure out how to make sure that we take care of the people that we agreed to hire over the long term. And I think the board really values that, because I don't think any of the positions were positions that I would look at and go, oh, we didn't need that, or we didn't want that, or we didn't think that was appropriate. And so it's, it's very important that we, that people explicitly understand the situation that we're left with in the setting.
And the unnecessary interest costs for the financing of the project you're gonna be paying for.
100%.
And, and so we're gonna move into expenditures in just a moment. We will be presenting projected revenues at our March meeting, so we're approaching the budgeting, Jason and I are approaching the budgeting process in that way, or in that fashion. I do just want to, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but just make sure we're understanding, because you're gonna see some places where we're trying to cut costs in terms of our expenditures. So we currently have that 1.6 that's covering those nine positions. Those nine positions still do exist, and now we are looking at funding of just $431,000 in addition to those nine full-time equivalent salaries. We have three additional positions that keep going. And so we're in a tricky budgeting place, if we could just be honest, but we, I would like to just shout out every administrator, building leader, department leader, we looked very carefully at every cost across the district. So you're gonna see in a moment, sort of just categorical data like curriculum budget or DHS budget, but in our finance meeting last week, we literally went line by line through each of those budgets to look through like exactly what's spent on each particular project or supply. So we're looking in that detailed of a manner at our expenditures.
So I actually wanted to give Dr. Moser and Dr. Need kudos for that, because Mr. Wagner's mentioned what came out of the financial meeting, them going through line by line to find things that they could cut that don't actively harm kids and to increase the efficiency. And I also want to give kudos to the administrative staff for participating in that and finding areas where you individually could do that to help us save money to cover these gaps. So I want to give you guys kudos for that.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, we can move to the next slide after that, sorry. So first, I just wanted to present to the board and to the public just a general view of how expenditures within a school district work. So if we're looking at overall expenses, you do see that salaries and benefits are a part of that, do take up approximately 70% of our budget. We will talk about what Mr. Moser and I are looking at when it comes to that in terms of possible savings. Then you will see the other kind of slices of the pie, if you will, and you're gonna see a lot of categories that aren't even listed there. For example, the individual names of our schools are not listed in this pie graph because the percent of expenditures that an individual school takes up are less than 1% of the overall budget. So anything listed there is 1% or greater of our overall budget. Also, you will note that there are some things, for example, debt service, we're on a set scale there, and so we can't just say that we're gonna pay less there this year. So those are a few items there that you just can't really move on. Utilities would be another one that's a little harder to move on, for example. Mr. Ryan, you could go ahead to the next slide. So I have about three of these slides, just so you could see our larger categories, if you will. So you'll see the name of a larger budget item, you will see what, and with our finance committee, just so you know, we took a look back in history that's larger than this as we went line item by line item, to see where we've come in over time there. But what I'm sharing with you today is just what was budgeted for 22-23, so our current year, what we're proposing for 23-24, and whether or not you see a savings or an increase in that particular budget line item. And again, in our finance committee meeting, we were able to go line by line within those categories in terms of how we're able to project savings, or why it's necessary for us to have an increase. Our increases are usually around a particular item of purchase or an inflation rate in a particular category, like in technology, for example. So you can see those categories there, you're seeing our school buildings first, and I would like to thank our building administrators, they found savings in every building. I would like to shout out Mr. Moser and curriculum, we actually took some things out of buildings and moved them to curriculum, and we're still able to find a savings there. So we're looking truly very carefully at each line item. Mr. Ryan, if you go to the next category, you will see additional categories within our budget, what was budgeted for this year, what we're proposing, and what that difference would be. In some of the places where you see increases, sometimes it's around a particular purchase, sometimes it's actually because we're already, the budget just wasn't budgeted properly, if I could be honest, and we're already over-budget in that category, so it wouldn't be appropriate to not make an increase for next year by looking at our actual expenditures in that category area. And then, Mr. Ryan, if you go to the next slide, you'll see sort of our final listing of categories. At this point, we are looking at expenditures. There are some categories in expenditures like technology, and in nursing, and in special education, where we actually end up getting some of that back, which we will reflect when we present our revenues. And then if you go to the next screen, and you see, I'm sorry, that savings there, can you go back, Mr. Ryan, I apologize, but a total savings we're looking at of $271,857 that we found by truly doing that line item by line item digging. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, you can go forward now. And so just want to name some of our budgetary challenges, but that we're looking really carefully at are, we do currently have undefined personnel costs due to teacher and support staff contract negotiations, but we're working through that, and we talked about that being 70% of the budget. So we're working closely with the negotiations committee to be able to kind of target those numbers. And of course, the reduction of $800,000 in federal revenue is a budgetary challenge for us. If you go to the next slide, you'll see what Mr. Moser and I are planning to do as we move forward in managing the budget. We will be making strategic staffing decisions, so we do have those nine staff positions that were covered by ESER funding. We also increased in staffing during COVID, even though our student population decreased during that period of time. So the board is committed to not furloughing staff, but we will be examining every retirement or resignation and determining whether or not that that is a position that needs to be filled in the district. We are currently comfortable identifying a $536,000 salary and benefit savings for next year, based on just information we already have in that category. We will continue to be very disciplined in our budget and operations management. So in the same way we've gone line item by line item in every one of those categories, we will continue to do that should information change throughout the spring in any of those areas. We also commit to being very diligent in following that budget in the 23-24 school year. So I actually would hope, and this may be a crazy thing to say, but we wouldn't be able to show tons of savings next year, but we would actually be able to say, we really accurately budgeted for the actual cost of the school district. Obviously, I'm sure there'll be some areas where we could have savings, but we're trying to be that thoughtful about what we're projecting in our expenditures. And we're working now to begin the process of accurately calculating our revenues, which we'll be prepared to present to the finance committee on February 28th.
Do you mind if I just add one?
Do you mind if I just add one thing? You know, in terms of what does disciplined budget and operations management look like? I think that's kind of important. So, we're looking at processes across the board, across the district, and making sure that we have strong processes in place for whatever it is. Whether it's hiring somebody, whether it's filling a position, whether it's purchasing things by a certain date. Because, you know, if you say, if we say we need things for students, which we do, we shouldn't be buying them probably in May or June. They should be bought closer to September, or August preferably. So I think one of the things we need to look at there is, how do we manage the budget when we come under near the end so that it's actually less of an expenditure from on a year-to-year basis? And there are certainly times that you do want to say, okay, we know this is coming up, and we still have it in the budget, so rather than defer it to the next year's budget, if you have the money at the end of the year, that's a great idea to close out. If you think about managing your home, we tend to do the same thing, so. But we will ensure, from a district administration, with the, working with the building leaders, that those are things that are targeted and thoughtful and strategic, as opposed to, we have money, so. And I'm not saying that that was necessarily the case all the time. I appreciate that.
And I would certainly like to thank Mr. Vognitz and Mrs. Cooper and Mr. Reichardt for their leadership on the finance committee and supporting us in this process. So thank you.
I want to make one real quick comment. I know you didn't get the revenue yet, but I do feel that as we, are you finished with the presentation portion of this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We talked about challenges and things being confusing, and I appreciate the two of you making a lot of sense of this, as well as the committee. I think it's great what you've done and the information you've brought forward. There's also, you know, good news on the revenue end, and we are very lucky, fortunate, that we live in Danville as we go through these challenges, because the earned income tax can be significantly higher than budgeted, and I think that's really important. And I'm saying it from a little bit of a personal standpoint, because I've been kind of anti-property taxes, I've been on the board. Danville residents pay 1.15% in their earned income tax, which is more than double what a lot of districts pay, where they pay .5. And because of that, we bring in $8 million a year in earned income taxes, which is really unheard of in this region, to bring in that much. So, I just want to put the little more of a positive spin. Yeah, challenging, confusing a little bit, but not that we're in a position where we're trying to dig out of things, where we need to make programmatic cuts, furlough people. We're not in that kind of situation, in my estimation. And I think you're going to see that moving forward, because the revenue is pretty solid. The federal revenue, we just need to make sense of, because we just didn't know it was happening. So thank you, Mr. Moser and Dr. Neid, for that.
Thank you. I think we feel confident as well, and also felt like we were able to find some savings just right in that creation.
Very good. And it's only February. We have a lot of time.
And that's the end of superintendent and financial, and so I think we're at public comment, if I'm reading it correctly.
Public comment on agenda items. Mrs. Ross?
So, since swimming was brought up, I guess that's valid on agenda. But I just really wanted to publicly thank the board and administration, and specifically Mr. Johns and Mr. Albertson for making the swim record board happen. There were names that had been misspelled on that board for 25 years. So it was a really great upgrade, and it meant a lot to the kids. And shout out to the maintenance department, because that was tedious work, getting every name and every time and every score up there with lots of letters and numbers and decimal points and colons, and following a really small spreadsheet. So we do have just a thank you for everyone who participated in that. And while we're talking about swimming, Mr. Varholic was one of our swimmers today, along with four high school teachers, or three high school teachers, and Mr. V. And it just meant a lot to the kids, like, to see them show up. And I know they were on their own time, so it was really, really a neat experience. So, they might have a hard time walking tomorrow. But just really wanted to publicly thank them for putting in the time after hours. And since it's on the agenda, I wanted to give a shout out to the volleyball discussion. I moved to Pennsylvania 10 years ago. And prior to moving to Pennsylvania, the only time I was in Pennsylvania was to attend Penn State volleyball camp. Penn State and Pittsburgh are both top schools for volleyball, so I assumed this was volleyball country when we moved here. So I won't pretend to understand what's going on with the budget or finances, but I think anytime we have the opportunity to do anything that the kids can be a part of, it's huge, and volleyball's a really, really fun sport. And I think a lot of kids could really enjoy it. So, thanks.
Did Mr. V break any of the records on the board?
It was close, and I do have videos, if anyone would like them.
I think those should be on the website.
I think I need that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on. The DPS Running Club, Tina Bartholomew, item 5.1.
Works. I think after all that, I would like to go for a run, actually. Maybe you want to join me? Well, thank you for letting me speak tonight, because this has been a lot of fun in the last couple of years that I've gotten to share with Danville primary students. So I want to say thank you first for listening to me. And I guess it was about five years ago when I actually became a full-time employee here at Danville Primary School. And from that beginning time, I was like, how can I give my whole self to this building, to the kids here? And I knew that part of, you know, a big part of my life is running. I tried to figure out, what can I do? Where can I offer that? And five years ago, there really wasn't an opportunity. So I just kind of kept searching and searching. So, it was kind of funny. First of all, you know, running has a lot of awesome positives. And I love it, because it's a stress reliever. It makes me happy. I get to talk with people while I'm running. And believe it or not, it is a lot of fun. So, that's really why I wanted to share it with Danville primary kids. But the summer after, I guess, COVID, Dr. Bickhart had sent out an email asking teachers throughout the district what they might be able to offer kids in the summertime. So, as, you know, an activity or something to bring them together socially. So of course, me, I'm like, this is my opportunity. This is my opportunity. Can I offer something for running? And I did, and it was a track and field camp. So, I offered track and field for first through eighth grade students, and it was a shirt plus, and lots and lots of fun. The parents loved it, the kids loved it. And so, I thought, what can I do more? Oh, Mr., I forgot. Jeff, you could continue on here. You can go on past that slide there. So I offered the track and field camp to all the kids through our district. And I think there were about 65 kids altogether that came out for it. It was super fun. Parents loved it. And then, we left that summer thinking, well, what else can we do to offer running? They said, well, can you offer this next summer? So I, you know, looked into things, and I found Kids Run the Nation. And I was searching on the internet, like, what can we do at Danville Primary to offer more running through the school year? And Kids Run the Nation is an organization that is free to everybody. And it's, you know, it's gender inclusive. And if you have people who want to run with kids, you're golden. So, that's what we worked on. And we put together a little program, that was an after-school program, for Kids Run the Nation last spring. And gee, I think there were about 60 children that actually were running. And twice a week, they would run with us. And we had teachers here in Danville Primary who were running with them. It was kind of neat. But Kids Run the Nation was what we went with. And there was a, it was a 10-week curriculum that we followed with it, teaching the kids. Can you go on to the next slide? These are more, this is more fun. There you go. Teaching the kids how to stretch, and what running was, like, running fast, running slow, running for pace. And the teachers here worked along with the kids in groups of mostly second grade when we first started it, because we didn't, it was our first time, and we didn't know how it was going to work out. But there's Mrs. Miller down there, stretching with the kids. We followed through, taught them a little bit about nutrition, and proper stretching form, and mostly really having fun together. So, running continues at Danville Primary. And with this, Kids Run the Nation, not only is it great for all those reasons, but the kids have a lot of self-accomplishment after learning so much. Well, the only drawback that we could find from this little program was that it, not all kids could participate in it. Because it was an after-school program, we realized that, like, what could we do for kids during the school day, or all the rest of the kids at Danville Primary? So I searched and to find something else that we could do. And you can go on to the next one, please. That's a little bit more of Kids Run the Nation with Mrs. Earp. And up in the top right corner, shout out to all our teachers, who, that's actually this fall that they had that particular group. But they had all been the teacher coaches with our 90 kids this past fall. Let me get back on track. So, morning milers came about, because some kids couldn't stay after school, parents couldn't pick them up, and there were just a couple, you know, little drawbacks like that. So, Mrs. Brous, the guidance teacher, and I brainstormed something called morning milers. And we asked Mrs. Willoughby about it, and she graciously let us try it. She's like, I don't know how you're going to do this, ladies. But we now have this thing called morning milers. And second grade gets to participate on Monday mornings, first grade on Tuesday mornings, and kindergarten on Wednesday mornings. And what we have going on is, like, kids running from 7:55 in the morning until about 8:20 or 8:25, three days a week. In the top right corner, you can see some of the accomplishments. Those are our little awards that we're giving out to these kiddos, and we're placing them on a bulletin board. When you leave today, if you take a right off of the stairs, these bulletin boards exist. But all those, the kids at Danville Primary, K1 and 2, are running for fun. And they're reaching goals of one mile clubs, five mile clubs, 10 miles. And we just had two, one in kindergarten and one in first grade, make the 15-mile club. So now, this offers, you know, running to all kids in our building, and it's pretty awesome. Not only does this offer running and exercise and getting their wiggles out, you know, off of the school bus in the morning, but it also is hopefully something giving them, you know, goals to work for, as well as just a lot of fun socially, and getting their day started right, hopefully focusing on what their day has, you know, up ahead. The bottom left corner, a little shout out to Daniella Brandt. Daniella comes every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and so does her mom, Melissa. And they volunteer their time. Daniella runs with the kids, and Melissa helps us with crowd control. And so, it's really awesome, really positive. The kids are loving it. And I wanted to tell you, let's go to the next slide there. Our map, we have a map of the United States of America, and we are traveling from Danville, Pennsylvania. We actually are now in Missouri, I believe. It's a little bit further than that string up there. But we're adding up all the miles, and we're trying to travel across America. And so, the kids are really up on, you know, who's got the most miles. Currently, first grade is in the lead. And so, we kind of are teaching them a little bit of a competitive rivalry. And that also is a lot of fun. So, home and school, some parents home and school are also participating, coming out and helping us tally up the laps that the kids are achieving. This is our outdoor playground area, the pavement area that you see. And I put cones out every morning, and they run around there. And if you go around 12 times, it equals one mile. So when they come down, come around one full time, they get a little jelly bracelet. And at the end of our 25 minutes of running, they count up their jelly bracelets, and we're teaching them data control by letting them write down their own numbers now, that we have taught them how to do it, and they can trust, you know, we trust them to write down their correct numbers. But we're having pretty awesome numbers come out of their morning runs. So 12 laps is one mile. And like I said, we tally them up, and we've had two kids recently accrue a total of 15 miles. It's just, it's just pretty cool. They get really excited, and then they return the jelly bracelets, and then they come back the next week and do it again. Mr. Reichardt sees us out there in the morning, running around, and we wave, you know. It's just like, all these kids are out every day. We've had a couple times where we've had to go inside in the library when the weather is not so great, and we run on spots on those days. It's not as much fun, but we turn on music and we run on spots. So, we're trying to encourage the kids to be healthful, moving, active, keeping focus. And through all three of these kinds of activities, the track and field camp in the summer, the Kids Run the Nation, and the morning milers, I'd like to say, Danville Primary School is running strong. So I just wanted to share all that with you, and that's the basis behind the Danville Primary, the Running Club, in hopes that we can continue this for as long as, as long as I can be here at Danville Primary.
Do I make a comment? Is that okay? It's me over here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Tina, I just want to thank you for all your hard work with that. I mean, going above and beyond is definitely amazing. And what I really like the most is the, when you do the morning milers. And so often, people think, you know, well, we have so much going on for our students. We have all these clubs and everything else, with the little ones in the Liberty Valley. But if the family can't pick them up, or they won't pick them up, it's not equitable. So I like the fact that you're having the equal chance for all students to participate in something. So I think that's wonderful.
Anything else? Okay. Item 5.2, Danville Head Start Program Change of Scope, Linda Marshall.
So, through, since March 20th, since the pandemic, I've talked several times about the way that Head Starts have been looking locally and also nationally. So, locally especially, not every community was looking the same. Some were having struggles with enrollment of children, some were having staffing issues. Here in our community and our program, we have luckily been almost full-staffed, but not with children. Our enrollment, funded enrollment is 85 children, and we have been around 60, 65 for the past three years. So we really did a large community assessment to look at the community, to kind of see where, if we have the numbers, where the low-income families are, what our housing has looked like for low-income families. We have really seen throughout the years, a lot of decrease in housing where our families used to live. So, through all pandemic, Office of Head Start has been listening to all of us and put out an information memorandum for the opportunity to do an enrollment reduction or a conversion. So, what that kind of can look like is a change of program scope. So I'm proposing that for our program. So to sustain our program and to continue where the level that we are now, we would like to look at changing our funded enrollment from 85 to 60 children. The number of classrooms in Head Start would go from five to four, so decreasing some staff in that area. One, the only staff at this point that we would be losing would be a teacher, because we are not at full enrollment in staff through the classroom age, so that we have enough staff to cover all of that. The cost of savings to us would be around about $90,000 with a teacher and benefits, and also then, a part-time classroom aid position and benefits. The money that we are saving would go back to staff. We would like to increase our staff salaries. Our salary is about 20,000 less than a district salary, with the teachers having the same four-year degree. So I would really like to have staff retain positions, so we don't have a high turnover. The quality of our program is best when staff are there. The time that it takes to train staff over and over is not putting our program at the quality that we want it to be. So if we can put our incomes up, get some staff there for retention stage... So if we can put our incomes up, get some staff there for retention, stay there, and then also we would like to put a small amount in staff wellness. We have, with some of our ARP money, have developed a staff wellness committee, have really worked very hard in morale and activities, in health, in mental health, and also just even a kindness campaign that we just did. And it has really made a difference in our program, I think, in our morale and overall well-being. Teachers want to come to school, they want to help the kids, and it just overall makes for a whole better day. The option is to stay at 85. We can easily do that, stay at 85 enrollment. But what that could mean, if we do not make that for next school year, we could lose funding. You would go on an under-enrollment plan, and then if we still do not meet it, they will take our funding. If we do this program, change of scope now, we keep our funding, and then I can put staff money back into the staff and into staff wellness. So in order to do that, we would just need approval from you to be able to write that grant, to write that amendment. We presented this to Policy Council last month, and they were in favor of it also, and then bring it here to you to see, and then apply. We would, I've done a whole new budget, a whole new write-up of what the program would look like, and then we wait for the federal government to approve it. This would not start until 23, 24. We do not want to disrupt anyone, any kids in the program at this point. So we are looking for a start date in the fall. No child will lose the program, because we have about 50 kids going to kindergarten in the fall, so it would be new children coming in, which we don't have in this right now anyway. Any questions, kind of?
Questions on the presentation? Go ahead.
Well, what happened when you make the changes to lower your capability, and a couple years, things would turn around, are you able to balance back up? Or can you move back up without any hard problems coming from the state or from the feds?
Would that, yes and no. Yes, we definitely can do that if it is available. If the federal government puts out the availability of increasing your enrollment, then you write again for the grant to increase your numbers. Pre-K counts, the state program right now is in competition. Every five years, you go into competition, and that is happening this spring. And so we are looking maybe even into increasing some of those. The pre-K counts program, a family of four can make up to $90,000. The Head Start program, family of four can make 30. In this area, 30,000 for a family of four, when people are making 15, 16 dollars an hour, is very, very difficult. Those poverty guidelines just went up to 30,000 just this month. So we are looking at maybe changing just a little bit of the numbers, moving kind of maybe towards the pre-K counts program because of the higher incomes, and then just kind of reducing the Head Start. We run the programs the same, the same high quality. We provide services the same. There's no difference in the programs except the funding. So if you're in one program or another, you don't know. You don't know the difference. Questions or any?
Other questions?
So essentially, you'd have one teacher that would lose a job?
And, yes.
And that's, I understand. And there's, but there are so many openings for Head Start teachers all over, which I hate to see, but I 100% agree with you about their salaries. They deserve so much more. They are the start of the student's education, and if we can lay that foundation, they're set for that future learning. So it is so important to keep those good, quality teachers. And I've seen them, you know, they work super hard, so, yeah.
The only change is if we do it. But there's no guarantee we get that until July.
We could try, right?
Yes, I will. I will definitely do that. That is one downfall of this. It's on the agenda to approve, just.
Your teachers are a totally different contractual agreement than ours, so there's no, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay. 6.1, School and Property Supplies Consent Items. The Board will take action to approve items 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, 6.6, and 6.7. I'm gonna take a quick look at those. I do have one I want to discuss just real briefly. It's a small one, but I have a question on it. I don't know if we're gonna be able to answer it without our new buildings and grounds, guys here, here just yet. 6.4, the K&amp;W Designing Environments for the Athletic Fields Project as presented.
That's work that they've previously done, where they have done some design work on, they show like a softball field, baseball field, practice field out there. That's not new work.
And we don't have them doing any more work of that type.
They're not doing other work for us.
Because I don't think we've actually taken a position as a board that we want to do that, so I'd like to stop paying them.
Completely agree.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any, any others that you'd like pulled out or discussion on? Okay, we have a motion to approve as consent items.
No move.
Second?
Okay.
Comments, questions? Okay, Terry?
Yep.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichard.
Yes.
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yep.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. 7.1, the DPS Running Club. The Board will take action to approve. The DPS Running Club is a voluntary student club at Danville Primary School. We have a motion to approve.
Thanks, move.
Mr. Reichard.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Appreciate the presentation, and I think we're ready to vote.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichard.
Yes.
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Girls volleyball. The Board will take action to add girls volleyball to Danville High School Athletics beginning the 2023 fall season. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Comments, questions on the girls volleyball proposal?
Did anybody come up with a cost yet?
Yeah, we had one last month.
Yes, we shared that. It'll be approximately $32,000 in the initial startup year.
So it's a little bit less than we thought it.
Yeah, that was similar to what we discussed, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the first year, Daryl.
Yeah.
That goes down. Yeah.
That's the startup with like a equipment and things like that.
And you can use some of that over as you go.
Correct.
Other questions or comments? I think we're ready to vote. Terry?
Mr. Reichard.
Yes.
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate that. Out-of-state trip. The Board will take action to approve an out-of-state trip to the NCFL Grand National Tournament in Louisville, Kentucky for five to 10 students and one to two adults using a school van, leaving May 25, 2023, and returning May 30, 2023. Registration fees, travel, and expenses for students we paid from this forensic team's budget. A motion to approve.
And a motion.
Mr. Reichard.
Second.
And Dr. Green. Questions, comments? Forensic team trip. Okay. Terry?
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichard.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Brick Limitant Management Report, 8.1, 2023, 2024 Core Selection Guides. The Board will take action to approve the 2023, 24 Core Selection Guides as presented. Motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
I'll second.
Questions, comments on this? Allows our principals to take their next step? Anything? Good to go?
Is this more steps to pathways, or?
I think this turns it into exploration, and students, anyone can take the same path they would like to take, but they are not mandated to do it.
Yeah, Mrs. Heater noted earlier, they did a nice job of using icons to denote what type of career field certain courses kind of relate to.
Right.
So students can make informed decisions about scheduling courses that will help them explore career areas in which they're interested.
And they're not locked in a specific one.
They are not locked in, no.
They are not locked in.
But they can choose to. They can choose to if they'd like. That's good. That's preferable to me, I know. It's real good. Okay. Any other questions, comments? And a motion, we have a second?
We did.
Terry? You're up.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yep.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichard.
Yes.
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
And Mr. Brookhart.
Yes, and I'd like to make a request real quickly. I think this is the right time. Could be at the end, but I'm gonna say it now. We take a look at the FIS Ed requirement at the high school. We started this years ago, and we never really brought it to fruition, but we're at one and a half. We should be at one, in my opinion, and we just never got that to the point where it could be. Not my decision, I'm just one person. I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost, and if it does get discussed, we bring it back to the Board.
We'll make sure that that's added to the next academic affairs agenda for discussion.
Appreciate it. Thank you. 10.1, January 2023 Finance Reports. Do we need action? We don't need action. Okay, we're good. Let's move on. Okay. The Board will take action to approve the bills for payment for January 5, 2023, through February 8, 2023, as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Vognitz, Dr. Green. Questions, comments, on anything related to the finance and the bills? I want to make one real quick comment again that I forgot earlier, and Mr. Mathias did a presentation a few months ago, and debt service at that point, he had brought up the number $51 million, which, based on the information he had, was correct. But the information he didn't have, because the annual financial report wasn't filed at that point, was that last debt that we borrowed was about 17 million, and half of that was then used as a refinancing. So the actual debt is not 51 million, it's actually 43 million. And I know that's an awful lot of money, but it's a significant difference. The end of this year, it'll be 41 million. We pay 2 million in principal and a million in interest, but 41 million is a lot of debt, but it is a difference. It's $10 million, and that was information he didn't have. He was operating off the budget. The AFR is now submitted, that's what it is. School code allows us to go significantly higher, but you know, it's substantial debt, but it's better than we had thought it was at that time. So just wanted to clarify that. We had a motion, we had a second?
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichard.
Is this a sustainable?
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. 11.1, Personnel Consent Items. The Board will take action to approve personnel items 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, 11.5, 11.6, 11.8, and 11.9. So 11.7 is not a part of it, that was taken out.
I'd also like to take out 11.9, so we have a small discussion on that.
Okay. So let's, let's deal with the other ones first, since 11.9's at the end, and then we'll, we'll deal with that. Anything that you want pulled out, anything additional, or any clarification? Okay. We need a motion? Get a motion. I don't think we got a motion on this yet, did we?
No.
Consent, okay. Motion to approve? The consent items.
I approve.
My motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Questions or comments? Terry?
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichard.
Yes.
Mr. Vognitz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. 11.9 is the coaching list. Coaching list, the Board will take action, approve the coaching list for the 23 spring season as presented, so that is not a consent, so we still need a motion and a second, and then we'll, we'll entertain the discussion, I believe, right? Is that the way we would proceed with this, Jen? So we need a motion on 11.9 to approve the coaching list?
My motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Richard, go ahead.
Just a couple questions on it. I do want to clarify, I want to make clarification on it. Under the contracts, it, you know, it's showing three years and one year. Is that three years from this date that they have remaining on their contract?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's from when that three-year contract was originally begun.
Okay.
But I'm gonna add, since you brought that up, and I didn't want to interrupt you, but it would be nice to know when these are on, where they do stand in that three-year.
Yeah, that's where I was heading.
Since we're moving toward year-to-year approvals, it'd be nice to know who we're still looking at.
Right, and so we're looking at, we can make sure that's added in the.
Yeah, that's.
And that's something we can add to the athletics committee meeting as an overview as well, because I know there were some other things that were requested. We could sort of add that as well.
Yeah, we, Mr. Huron had some ideas about how it should be presented, so we could just add that as a general athletics committee item, of like, how would you like to see it presented for approval?
Right. And then I also want to make note that for track and field, it's John Vella and Tina Bartholomew as both head coaches respectively?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct. It's Tina Bartholomew as the head girls' track and field coach, and John Vella as the head boys' track and field coach.
And they are gonna be deciding their own?
Correct.
Staff?
Correct.
Yeah, we did have an athletic committee meeting I was present at, and we said that the coaches will be choosing, and will have that autonomy to choose their assistants. So if that's the case this year, and I know you're looking at some procedural issues moving forward.
Yes.
Okay.
We are, and those assistants have, positions have been posted today.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this before we vote? Okay.
Terry?
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yeah.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Policy and insurance consent items, twelve point one. Board members, so we're looking, the board will take action to approve items twelve point two, twelve point three, twelve point four, twelve point five, twelve point six, twelve point seven, twelve point eight, twelve point nine, and twelve point ten.
Motion.
Take a look. I think we have to decide, we talk about these and then we do a motion?
Yes.
Because we don't know what we're pulling yet. I'm going to ask that twelve point two be pulled, the calendar, from consent. Anything else? Anyone else have anything that you want taken out of consent? And I'm going to ask that twelve point ten be taken as well. Even though I'm going to support it, I think we need a little more explanation so people understand what we're doing. Okay. On the others? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Terry, let's vote and get through these, and then we'll talk about the two we pulled out, okay?
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper. Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. All right, twelve point two, first reading the calendar, and the issue I want to bring up, because I may not vote for it, so it can't be consent, is I'm just not a big fan of Act Eighty Days, which I had talked to Mr. Moser and Dr. Need, and this is not a criticism of anybody in the formulation of a calendar, but the Act Eighty Days, just so everyone's aware, is a day where the students don't come to school. There is professional development, whatever the case may be. I understand the philosophy and I understand the reason for it at times, it's just something I, I just think kids were supposed to have them here a hundred and eighty days, and they should be here a hundred and eighty days. I know they may not feel that way, but I do, so I wanted that pulled out so we could vote on it separately. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar first reading twelve point two?
Show move.
Second?
Hey, second.
Second, okay. Any other questions, comments on this?
If I may speak, I would like to just share that I certainly share your philosophy in wanting students here. We are in looking at next year's professional development, just seeing some significant needs in the state mandates around science of reading and just the general need for that with new curriculum in several areas, and we want to do a series of new diagnostic tests and analysis of that data. So in proposing to Act Eighty Days, I'm certainly not indicating that that would always be the case for the district, but I just feel like in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we have a more significant need for professional development than we may in future years.
Yeah, if it weren't a consent item, I wouldn't have said as much, but since it was, I felt that I had to say something to give an explanation why I wanted to pull it out and may not support it. I'm not trying to influence anyone else's vote. Everyone should vote their conscience.
I have a question. Have we always dismissed early for the day before Veterans Day? It looks like November tenth?
Oh, that is conference day, so we do dismiss early for parent conferences. Sorry, it took me a moment to find it.
Any other comments or questions on the calendar? Terry?
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
No. Twelve point ten. Authorize the superintendent of schools, sorry about that. The board will take action to grant authority to the superintendent of schools to hire an individual or company to provide accounting services relative to the AFR and the audit with board ratification at the following board meeting. Let's get a motion to approve, and then we can give a little explanation of what that means exactly. We get a motion? Mr. Klausert?
Second.
And Mr. Vognets. This gives Dr. Need the authority to pull someone in, when we find somebody we're comfortable with, to fill in on a short-term basis until we actually hire a business manager. We knew of this and had, you know, a proposal or so that we're not real comfortable with, I think, and instead of waiting a month or having a special meeting, because this is not a permanent employee, it would give her some, some leeway and autonomy to do so. We'll certainly make sure all board members are aware when this is happening. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about this? Dr. Need, do you want to add anything, or Mr. Moser?
The scope of this, so right now, we are operating without a business manager in the school district, and Mr. Moser and I are trying to, you know, carry that lift and are working hard to develop the budget. The scope of this work would be someone who could resubmit our annual financial report and get us through the auditing process, and that would certainly be helpful just in terms of our time constraints and quite honestly, skill sets. I wouldn't apply for a business manager position, so it would certainly be helpful and is a needed work to get hired here sooner than later. We also have posted an advertisement for the business manager position and are currently accepting applications, so that would be a separate process from this when we would come to recommend to the board a permanent position.
Anything else on this? We all good? Okay, we can vote, Terry.
Mr. Vognets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Okay. We're going to seek a, an alteration to the agenda, or actually an amendment to the agenda at this point. Jennifer, if I proceed in a manner that is not consistent with the law, let me know.
I will.
We're going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add the resignation of Dr. Gattacu effective February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and to authorize advertising of the board vacancy. This resignation was recently received and could not make it onto the posted agenda. Can I get a motion to make that modification?
Motion.
In a second, okay. We have both. We need to open up for public comment.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the resignation of Dr. Gattacu or the proposed resignation before the board takes a vote?
Can I say a few words?
Do you want to do that before or after we vote? I'm not sure. When should he do that?
He can do it when we're actually getting the motion added on, because this is just adding it on to the agenda, and then we'll actually have a motion on that item.
So let's get it added first, and then we'll do what we need to do, okay? No public comment on this particular item to amend, right? Okay.
Do I count as public? I just want to say I'm sad to see you go.
I am too.
So, and I just wanted to say that publicly.
Yeah, your big loss. Big loss, that's for sure. We understand. Totally understand.
Can I?
Let's vote on the amendment, okay? And then we'll come back around to you. I know you're anxious. Can we get a vote?
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Dr. Gattacu.
No comment.
We'll abstain you. Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Heater.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to do the motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Johannes Gattacu